Regarding limiting of gatherings and staying in place. Electronic participation is encouraged in pursuant to the emergency ordinance. Physical attendance by the public is not allowed. I now turn it over to all members of the board to state whether they are physically present or participating by electronic or remote means. Mr. Granger.
I am attending, uh, uh, until attending.
Mr. Stonehill.
I am here remotely.
Ms. Cupka. Ms. Cupka. I know Ms. Cupka's having-
Cupka attended remotely.
Thank you. Mr. Bush.
I'm physically here in the boardroom.
This is Chairperson Kathy Bender, participating as always remotely. Uh, staff and clerk are responsible for receiving public comment notice of opportunities for the public to access and participate have been widely disseminated on the county website and through other county resources. I direct the clerk to include this statement and the members remotely participating and those physically present to be memorialized in the minutes. Dr. Young, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this time is public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. If you are online now and would like to speak, please unmute and we will hear your public comment. I will wait at least a minute, just in case it takes a moment for you to unmute your audio. Okay, uh, Dr. Young, do you have any correspondence?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have correspondence from Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. George Millsaps of the U.S. Census Bureau. Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate and thank the Chair of the King George County Complete Count Committee, Mr. Chris Clark, and Dr. Neiman Young, the members of the King George County Complete Count Committee, and all the citizens of King George County for their efforts in supporting the 2020 Census. Due to the efforts of many, I am pleased to report that King George County has already exceeded its 2010 Census Final Self-Response Way. A complete and accurate count in King George County will help ensure that your citizens will have appropriate representation, but also aid in securing the federal and state funding that is based upon the U.S. Census. Although this is a major milestone, there is still work to be done. I encourage you to contact your constituents, ask them to complete the 2020 Census online at 2020census.gov. Doing so will ensure an accurate final 2020 Census. It is the safest, easiest way to complete the Census. Again, congratulations on this accomplishment and thank you for your continued support. Respectfully, Dr. George Millsaps, Partnership Specialist, U.S. Census.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Do you have any other correspondence?
No, Madam Chair.
Do any of the other board members have any correspondence? I do have one correspondence that was sent to me just before the meeting and they have asked me to read it. Hold on and I'll bring it up. It is a little bit lengthy, so I will read it now. Dear King George Board of Supervisors, I am ready to share my thoughts and opinions. I count ourselves lucky that we have a wonderful Sheriff's Department and tranquility in King George, especially while we are suffering a COVID-19 pandemic. In the spirit that government serves all the people, I am in favor of laws and policies that benefit people who own or are employed by businesses and value public spaces. Public spaces are valued because most people cannot afford their own large swath of lands and boat docks on a coastline. In practice, this looks like an environmentally clean community with high-quality public schools, open public spaces, public transportation, safe roads, and businesses flourishing with consumers. To that end, the local issues that are important to me are as follows. Number one, clean, reliable drinking tap water and sewer system. Thank you for correcting deficiencies and ensuring they never happen again on your watch. Seeing the news about the damaged water system in Detroit, in my experience abroad, we should never take our clean drinking tap water for granted. Number two, public schools. Maintain a high-quality school system that emphasizes good sportsmanship, science, technology, engineering, and math STEM and vocational training. There should be both sports and academic competitions and scholarships. We lived where history was made during the Civil War with slavery and segregation. Students should have field trips to historic sites and projects to appreciate where our nation came from and how to always look forward in proving where we are going as a country. The Navy base and defense contractors are a unique resource that can be used to give students a summer work experience in engineering. There are working engineers who can inspire students with the latest tech, tutor, and mentor students. Teachers should be paid as essential professionals because they train the next generation of citizens in our history, good sportsmanship, the trades, and STEM. To support online learning, high-speed internet should be everywhere utilities can be provided and then offered at affordable prices. Number three, light. Lighted commercial real estate should be forbidden in residential neighborhoods. Nobody wants to live in a slum. Slums depress property values and start a downward spiral in revenue to the county and may increase expenses in law enforcement. Where feasible, failed businesses lots in residential areas that nobody wants to purchase can be turned into county parks and playgrounds. Number four, public spaces. Dogren Wayside, Barnesville Park, and Dogren Heritage Rails Trails Park. The governor purchased home at Dogren Wayside should be modified to include a colonial beach-style fishing pier, public boat landing, public dock, the Dogren Heritage Museum, Nature Center, and leased restaurant and conference spaces. Scouts and park rangers should mark and maintain hiking trails. The U.S. 301 Bridge should be designed through a county and VDOT collaboration to provide safe access to Dogren Wayside and Marshall Park. Federal and state highway funds should be applied to this project. If permitted by law, allow businesses to contribute to the Dogren Wayside improvements and in return display sponsorship signage and perhaps county tax credits. If the private owner of the Dogren Heritage Rails Trails land deserves, desires to collaborate, sell, or transfer the land to the public, the county should support the effort. The facility requires safe, well-marked road entrances with parking lots and restrooms. Number five, abandoned homes should be reclaimed by the county and made available for rehabilitation to provide affordable housing for low-income families. Abandoned home brings the same problems as blighted commercial property. An occupied home provides the county need property tax revenue and income tax revenue to the county. Thank you for your kind consideration of my concerns. Respectfully, Adam J., and I'll spell the last name because I do not want to pronounce it wrong, S.I.M.O.N.O.F.F. He lives at 5340 Gordon Drive, King George, Virginia, 22485. And that is the only thing I received. Thank you. I'm having trouble going to the... All right, I, uh, that'll close public comments while I'm trying to get my screen back up. Uh, we'll go to reports from members of the board. Mr. Granger, do you have a report?
Yes, ma'am, it's a short one. Uh, Wednesday, May 27th, I attended an FRA Board of Directors Special Meeting. Uh, it was, we were meeting to discuss the budget with the current COVID situation and just trying to handle the, make sure that we had funds available, uh, for the running of the FRA and everything was handled properly. So, um, that's all I have though, but thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill.
Mine as well is fairly brief. Um, last week, I've been talking to a number of people in reference, um, uh, next year's, uh, taxation that we have now for the county. So, been working on a number of different people and talking to them, getting ideas on that. Thursday, the 28th, I met with, uh, Mr. Carabot down at his property down on Rosedale, uh, Rose, Rose Dale Drive, and looked at his property and referenced some complaints we received about people trespassing and stuff. Also then, uh, looked at the new parking lot that VDOT finally had roped off and taped off across the street from the buckler property. And also, um, this last weekend, been down to Wayside a number of times to look at some, uh, Wayside. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Cupka, I know you had mentioned with your, um, issues with the phone service where you are located, that you would like to just share your board report, uh, online with, uh, the Freelance Star and Project 94 and enter it into record electronically. Is that still what you would like to do?
Can you all hear me?
I can hear you.
So, I do have a written report. I will not elaborate. I will share it online as I normally do. Uh, if y'all can hear me, I just want to congratulate, uh, last Thursday, the 28th, we had a Board of Directors meeting for Rappahannock Regional Jail. And we, the board, appointed from the acting position Superintendent Kevin Hudson to the permanent superintendent position. He's done a remarkable job, given the COVID-19 circumstances he's had to deal with for both the inmate population and his staff. And additionally, I want to commend our own county administrator, Dr. Neiman Young, for the job he's had to do. A lot of stepping and fetching as far as completely reworking the budget. He chaired the Budget Committee for Rappahannock Regional Jail, and I just want to point out to everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka. Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's very, uh, empty and lonely here in the boardroom. Um, so I miss you guys and can't wait till we all get to get back together, uh, to hold these meetings. Um, I'd just like to share that I'm, I'm looking forward to rolling into Phase Two for the, uh, state reopening on Friday. I look forward to, uh, hearing, um, from our county attorney and our county administrator on how we plan to approach that with, with the new, um, Phase Two. So, I'm glad to see that we're getting back to some sense of, uh, normacy. With that, uh, I, I would just like to give a comment on, on something that's taking place regionally, nationwide. Um, just as I stood for our Second Amendment rights, I'm very proud of that, the fact that King George County became a Second Amendment sanctuary county. I take the same passion with the whole Constitution, and that includes the, the First Amendment as well. With the protests going on, um, I support the people out there that, that are protesting to express their concerns in a peaceful manner. However, with the, the riots and looting and the general anarchy that is taking place, I do not support that one iota. The positive news that has come out of the recent events, um, is that the nation is unified in the rebuke of this former officer now incarcerated in Minnesota. I saw the video as, as sure as many have, and this was an act of murder unjustifiable and is to be rebuked with, with every fiber of our being. But we cannot give way to anarchy, and we need to support our law enforcement. I would like to thank Sheriff Giles, our Sheriff's Department, our SRT, for the mutual aid they're providing to our neighbors in Fredericksburg. And with looking at the news, it's very disheartening to see our men and women with a badge that are out there to protect our communities are being targeted. There's evil everywhere. There's evil politicians, there's evil lawyers, evil doctors, evil teachers, coaches, the list goes on and on. It comes down to personal accountability. Justice will be served on this man, and I ask that our communities come together and, and, and make sure that, that our neighbors, their businesses are protected. I'm grateful for King George County. We don't have these incidents. We're a wonderful, diverse community, um, and we, we come together as a community. So, I'm very proud to, to be here in the boardroom representing King George County. Madam Chair, that's, that's my report for this evening. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Um, I will keep my remarks very brief. I want to thank everyone in our county government for everything they've done through all the COVID-19 pandemic, uh, serving our citizens and, uh, keeping the county government going, and also, uh, our EMS frontline sheriff's office and tech, technical staff, Kristin engineer team, everyone that's in the county. I, I can't thank you enough for what you've done and what you continue to do. Uh, I did, uh, get on a one very interesting call with, uh, a whole bunch of information about, uh, the legislation that has gone through in this past, uh, legislature and assembly, including solar farms and the impact they have on local communities that I will share with my colleagues. I took a lot of notes and I'll share them with you when I've had time to type them up because I answer phone calls lots every day. Um, I just want to, once again, uh, tell the community, uh, thank you for serving, and I look forward to hearing from you, and that is the end of my report. Uh, Dr. Young, Senator, do we have a motion?
I'm moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right, I will do a vote a little differently this time because we had some audio problems with the service authority, so I will call each person by name and please tell me your vote. Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Stonehill?
Aye.
Mr. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Cupka?
Cupka, aye.
Thank you. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Hold on, let me move my agenda. All right, county officials report, constitutional officers report?
No constitutional officers, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Britton, report of the county attorney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing that I would note is that the Governor's Order, Emergency Order 65 was issued today, um, and will take effect on Friday. It's quite a long document. So, uh, if folks want to read that, it's available on the Governor's website. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Next up will be 0602, our public hearing for proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Hold on one second, I will bring up what I need to read. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing regarding the proposed FY 2020, 2021 operating budget pursuant to Section 15.22506 of the Code of Virginia. This FY 2021, 2020, 2020, also has been prepared, advertised, and published for information in fiscal planning purposes only, as required by law. The inclusion in the budget of any items does not constitute a commitment or obligation on the part of the Board of Supervisors of King George County to appropriate any funds for that project or purpose. The budget has been presented on the basis of the estimates and requests submitted to the King George County Administrator. There is no designation or allocation of any funds of King George County until there has first been an appropriation for that purpose by the Board of Supervisors. The budget is for information and fiscal planning purposes and will not be approved, adopted, or ratified by the Board of Supervisors at this public hearing. Dr. Young, the county administrator, will provide a brief overview of the proposed budget. I will then open the floor for public comment, either in person or by electronic means. Please state your name, your address, and once I call for public comment, I will wait a minute at least so that people can, uh, unmute their audio and, uh, give their statement. I ask that you limit your comments to three minutes in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Dr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, if you could bring up the presentation? While Chris is bringing up the presentation, I would like to, uh, apologize upfront to the board and to, uh, the general public. Um, I am going to revisit a few, um, discussion items that we had throughout, um, the budget planning process, but it's my understanding that we may have new, uh, members, uh, in the audience that, um, weren't privy to those previous discussions, so I just want to make sure that we all have a clear understanding of what's being proposed, uh, for the fiscal year 2021 budget. Next slide. Here's our agenda. Next slide. Board, if you recall, we had, uh, budget impacts that are basically outside cow, outside costs that affect, impact King George County's budget, and we basically, they're mandatory and they're either mandated either by, um, regional agreements or by, um, um, services that we receive that, um, we have to, um, bear in order to maintain, um, that service. For example, life insurance or health insurance for county employees. So, you look at the slide that's depicted before you, you'll see that in fiscal year 2021, these are the major issues that will impact the budget. These mandatory programs are captured first with a 1.7% increase to the VRS obligation, a 0.03% increase in life insurance, a decrease to our contribution to our commitment to the juvenile detention center, and an additional $191,466 contribution to the Rappahannock Regional Jail. In addition, our health insurance went up $28,008. If you recall that during earlier work sessions for our budget, we had other optional programs or optional budget impacts that we were willing to propose prior to us, um, coming to an understanding of how the current pandemic will financially impact national economy and the county, uh, county economy. So, these optional programs, for example, like additional positions or capital purchases like vehicles or furniture, were struck from the, um, budget impact, and we now have that captured as $0 affected to fiscal year 2021 budget. If you notice in red, we have a total $414,462 of increased cost to fiscal year 2021 budget, and those are just mandatory, um, expenditures that we could not, um, escape. Next slide. So, understanding, um, those mandatory budget impacts and understanding the needs of our departments that were submitted through budget request, uh, some of these needs were increases due to natural inflation, or, um, there were increases due to additional requirements that were needed for our departments just to sustain governmental operations for King George County in 2021. Um, we understood that the original proposals were approximately $4.5 million in additional expenditures for fiscal year 2021. But again, understanding the financial impact that the current pandemic has had on the county's economy, we decided that we was going to take strict measures, um, to, um, decrease, uh, those expenditures and try to bring to the community a fiscally responsible budget. Those actions included deleting pay raises for county employees, again, removing capital purchases, an example of vehicles and furniture, suspending nonessential travel, maintaining the current staffing levels in fiscal year 2021 as in fiscal year 1920, and even suspending annual payment to the debt mitigation fund. Through those measures, we were able to decrease that $4.5 million, uh, increase down to a $2.1 million deficit between anticipated revenue and anticipated expenditures. And again, we still thought that was not responsible enough and that there was more actions that we could take to reduce that budget. Therefore, we decided to look regionally. After discussions with our regional neighbors, specifically our regional, uh, county administrators and city manager, we all agreed to level fund outside agencies, reduce the Rappahannock Regional Jail budget, reduce the juvenile detention center budget, and of course, we had, uh, received a more, uh, fine-tuned and pencil-sharpened, uh, revenue forecast from state funding. Because of these actions, we were able to, uh, reduce that, um, $4.5 million gap down to a $2.1 million gap, and then finally, we're able to close it at $1,919,903. That is the gap between, uh, our anticipated revenues and our expenditures. Next slide. Just to depict what the board would be committed to under this proposal, this is how our actions will affect our outside agency budget. Specifically, if you'll notice highlighted in yellow, we had a Thurman Brisbane homeless shelter who is going to be level funded, so the original request for fiscal year 2021 of $15,000 was level funded to $9,500. The George Washington Regional Commission, original budget request of $29,573 will remain at $22,511. The Tri-County City Soil and Water Conservation District request for $54,765 will be level funded to $53,050. The way that our actions are impacting the Rappahannock Regional, Rappahannock Regional Jail and our juvenile detention center is the fact that all pay increases for staffs of the Rappahannock Regional Jail and the juvenile detention center have been removed in the fiscal year 2021 budget, which is in keeping with same stance that all the regional localities have taken regarding pay increases and compensation for county employees in their respective localities. Next slide. So, understanding our $1.9 million deficit, I present to board the following proposal. This fiscal year 2021 proposal calls for the budget to increase 3.7% in, uh, 3.7% from $85.3 million to $87.5 million. Under the current proposal, 57% of the budget would be dedicated to schools, the remaining 43% being allocated to meet county needs. If you'll note that our non-school expenditures are increasing 2.1%. If we move forward with this proposal, we will realize the budgetary gap of $1,919,903. To close this gap, this budget proposes to tap the Revenue Stabilization Fund for $1,619,903, leaving a $300,000 deficit. We would then reduce the local contribution to the schools by $300,000 to address that deficit. Please note that due to state and federal funding, the reducing of the local contribution to the school still allows for the administration to realize a budget increase of $1,359,000 in fiscal year 2021. In keeping with state code, the board must approve the school's budget by May 15th, but understanding that there was, um, turbulence in the General Assembly, um, that was extended an additional 30 days. I'm now working closely with the school superintendent, uh, to bring forth to the board a, um, a budget for the board to adopt and appropriate by category on June 16th, along with the county budget, along with the county budget. Understanding this, um, the board has already approved the local contribution in the amount of $17,545,584. The way forward would be the board entertaining, uh, approving this proposal and adopting it at the June 16th Board of Supervisors meeting. I will now stand by for any questions, concerns, or guidance. Madam Chair.
We can't hear.
Hold on, my mic, uh, ripped out for a moment. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I will open the, the floor up for public comment. Is there anyone online, Dr. Young, that has submitted correspondence?
I was reached out to by Ms. Carrie Gonzalez, who was a member of King George County School Board. Uh, she decided, my understanding is she decided that she wanted to speak in person rather than submit comments, uh, via email.
Right. Ms. Gonzalez, are you online, would like to speak? Can you unmute your microphone?
Yes, I am. Can you, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
Wonderful, okay, thank you. Um, so my name is Carrie Gonzalez. My address is 8116 Oak Crest Drive, that's King George, Virginia, 22485. Um, so, good evening to you all, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. I would like to make this public comment, um, as Dr. Young stated, with regards to the 2020, 2021 budget proposal and the local contribution to the schools. So, this year, no doubt presents a challenging time, not only for our country as a whole, but also for our county. The economic uncertainty of the future is certainly a strain on many, and I fully respect the difficult decision that lays ahead of you as board in deciding upon next year's budget. I understand that the decision to reduce the local contribution to the schools by, by the $300,000 mentioned was based upon the anticipated cares funding to the schools, but this is a tad short cited, cited. Um, state requirements and guidance for the reopening of the schools in the fall are at this time still unknown, and it is, uh, more likely that the schools would require more funding than less. I know that the services provided by all county departments, um, are critical to the safety and well-being of all of our constituents, but investing in our children is one of our longest-term investments, as impacts to them can be cumulative and realized not only tomorrow, but also in the future, as they graduate and become contributing members of our community. So, as a parent, a constituent, and also as a Dogren District School Board member, I would like to ask that you consider the safety, well-being, and education of our children, not just today, but also into the future, um, and reconsider supporting, um, the level funding of our schools in 2020, 2021, um, and not reducing that local contribution. Um, and that concludes my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Uh, Dr. Young, do you have anybody else that submitted correspondence?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have any board members that have- Thank you. Do I have any board members that have had people reach out to them that would like to read correspondence? I'll just wait a second, see. I do not think so. I will once again open it up for public comment. If there was anybody who would like to unmute and state your name and your address, please do so at this time. I will wait a minute, it is 7:02 to 7:03, to see if anybody would like to speak. The floor is yours. Once again, this is the last call. If anyone would like to give public comment about the budget, please unmute yourself and state your name and your address. All right, being that we have no more public comment, I will close the public comment part of the public hearing. And that closes our public hearing. Hold on a second. Dr. Young, presentation and reports. First up, 0604 Department of Community Development, adoption of secondary road addition. Hopyard Farm. Yes.
Madam Chair, I highly recommend, I know that the board isn't wanting to vote tonight, but I think that at least we should open it up for discussion with the supervisors, and then I'd look for consensus for us to move forward with the proposal to be adopted and appropriated on June 16th.
Thank you, Dr. Young, for catching me on that. Virtual meetings can be a fun time. I open it up to my board members. I apologize for discussion. I'm going to do it by person, each person. So Dr. Mr. Granger.
Yes, ma'am. I don't have anything else to add. I think we've discussed this fairly at length. So I'm amenable with the budget that's proposed currently to go forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill.
We've had numerous meetings and numerous conversations about this subject, and I'm just ready to move forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I'd like to thank Ms. Gonzalez for her comments and engaging in the process. And as a school board member, I appreciate her fighting for the schools. And like she alluded to, it is a difficult decision. But given the circumstances and the full lens we have to look at, I believe we're making the right decision. I do have one question, though. When Dr. Young was giving his presentation, he was talking about this would come before the board for by category for the school's budget. Is that something we want to do? Is fund by category? Or are we just funding the budget for the schools to utilize as appropriately dictated by the school board? Can I get some clarity on that, please?
Yes, sir. You'll be adopting the school's budget on June 16th, and then you'll be appropriating by category on June 16th as recommended by the schools.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we weren't making those categories and saying you have X dollars for this and this and this. I want to make sure that we're working with.
That's a state code requirement that it be appropriated by category as recommended by the schools.
Thank you for that clarification. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Kupka.
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. I want to thank Ms. Gonzalez for her comments. I really appreciate her taking the time to speak tonight. I am in agreement to move forward with consensus on the school board budget and the entire budget. However, I would like it noted for the record. I hope that the spirit of the budget conversations that our board had during budget work sessions can be captured. And if our funding situation allows us to in the future, we can revisit not just the school budget, but other budget allocations in the future if our situation allows us the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka. I have the same, sir. I apologize for my college again for missing you there for a moment, but I agree with Ms. Kupka. I've said this before. If our situation monetarily gets a little better, we should revisit everything. And I thank Ms. Gonzalez for coming online and giving us her public comment. But that is also, we do have a consensus. That is what you needed, Dr. Young, correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair. We'll have the budget ready for adoption and for appropriation at the June 16th Board of Supervisors meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Young, your staff, and everyone who has been involved in this process. Now we will move on to our action items. 0604 Department of Community Development, adoption of secondary road addition, Hopyard Farm, Section 2.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is a relatively routine action, so that's why I decided to take it over versus inviting the Community Development Department at best any time of night, introducing this board report. But basically, this is a request for the board to adopt the resolution adding improved roads at Hopyard Farm, Section 2. Adopted them so they can be accepted into the Virginia Department of Transportation's secondary road system. Included in your board packet is a plat and the maps identifying those roads. And in addition, there is a resolution for the board to adopt with reads as follow. Whereas the streets described on attached additions form AM-4.3, fully incorporated here and by reference, is shown on the plat of record in the clerk's office of the Circuit Court of King George County. And whereas the resident engineer for the Virginia Department of Transportation has advised this board, the streets meet the requirements established by the subdivision street requirements of the Virginia Department of Transportation. Now therefore, it is resolved that the King George County Board of Supervisors does hereby request the Virginia Department of Transportation to add the streets to Hopyard Farm 62 as described on the attached additions form AM-4.3 to the secondary system of state highways pursuant to state code 33.2-705 and the department's subdivision street requirements. And be it further resolved, this board guaranteed a clear and unrestricted right of way of as indicated on the attached and executed AM-4.3 form, and any necessary easements or cuts, fills, and drainage guaranteed as evidenced by plats of record, plat of Potomac Landing, Section 3, INT number 20061004000077870. And be it further resolved that the county administrator or his designated should afford a copy of this resolution to the developer and to the Virginia Department of Transportation's Land Use Section, Curtis Ward District.
So moved.
Wait a second. Any discussion? All right, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Granger.
Aye.
Mr. Stonehill.
Aye.
Mr. Bush.
Aye.
Ms. Kupka.
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I didn't get it in time. I do have a minor point of discussion that I believe the resolution needs a minor amendment. If everyone could look at paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4. We are talking about Hopyard Farms, I think. And I'm pretty familiar with the roads we're talking about because I personally knocked in those neighborhoods last year during my campaign. And in the fourth paragraph, be it further resolved as evidenced by plat of record, plat of Potomac Landing, Section 3. So, and I'm sorry, I did not catch this when I first read the packet, but I think we need to amend that if I could respectfully defer to the county attorney before we authorize this.
Mr. Britton.
I would, can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, I can.
I mean, in order to answer it, that I'd have to go through and see what it's called and whether it matches. I don't know that I can do it in the amount of time we have left here.
Mr. Britton, would it be better to table this and bring this back up on the June 16th meeting?
I think that would be better, yeah, unless Dr. Young says that there's a time sensitivity.
I'm not sure if it's time-sensitive, but I know that it seems counterintuitive that the resolution would read Potomac Landing 3. And I can definitely consult with the community development staff. If the board would give us the authorization to execute the resolution, we'll check and make sure that the language is supposed to read Potomac Landing 3. If not, we'll change it to Hopyard Number 2, execute the document and advise the board of the corrections that have been made.
Mr. Britton, is that allowable? We lost Mr. Britton there.
I'm back. I had to unmute myself.
That's okay.
Well, I guess you'd be doing a, I don't think so because this is an amendment of the motion. And so the amendment either has to be seconded and either passes or fails. So I don't see how that can be done under the rules. We're going to have to find out whether or not, what the correct language is and what the correct plat is. And that's going to have to be in the motion of the board if it's going to be done by resolution. So I understand, Dr. Young, and he's trying to do it as conditionally and as quickly as possible. But what is happening from a procedural perspective here is that there has been an amendment to the motion, and that needs to rise or fall on its own.
So, Mr. Britton, I have a question. So we had the motion properly seconded, and three votes have already taken place. Could we vote this out and then have a motion to amend what was previously voted on with conditionally and then vote that in? Is that something we could do? Because we do have three votes on the table right now.
Right, the final vote, yes. The vote can be, the motion has not passed. There's a motion to amend, which as a result of, as I understand it, technical difficulties did not come in during the discussion period, and that's fine. So basically, someone would now could move to retract the the maker of the motion can move to retract the motion. If that gets seconded, you can vote on it, and then we can make the amendment. And if the new motion was going to be in the form that the board authorizes the execution of the document with the correct plat being either Hopyard or Potomac Landing, I think that would be fine.
Okay, well.
The person making the motion is going to have to move to withdraw.
There has been a motion to amend, yet the latest motion or the motion that I made was to adopt as presented. That's what was seconded, and we have three votes on that. Then Ms. Kupka brought up that point. So should we vote this out now and then have a motion to amend based on proper language and then vote on that? Like, my question being, how do we dispose of the current motion on the floor right now that's already been in the process of voting?
The person who moved can retract the motion, even though we're in the process because Ms. Kupka is proposing an amendment during her vote.
Okay. Well, Madam Chair, I would like to retract my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
And then, Matt, we take a vote?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Granger.
Aye.
Mr. Stonehill.
Aye.
Mr. Bush.
Aye.
Ms. Kupka.
Kupka, aye.
And Binder, aye also. So now we need a new motion, correct? An amended motion?
Right, just a new motion. There's no motion on the table, so it wouldn't be amended. And I would suggest that the resolution be adopted as presented, except with the potential correction of the Hopyard or Potomac Landing portion of the plat as directed by and with consultation of staff.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now we'll go to vote. Mr. Granger.
Aye.
Mr. Stonehill.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bush.
Aye.
Ms. Kupka.
Kupka, aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My apologies.
Madam Chair, we can, go ahead. And we can just meet with the staff and get it corrected, and then we'll bring it back. And I think we just, if Mr. Young is amenable, we can just bring it back on the June 16th meeting to let y'all know what the final resolution looked at after speaking with Community Development.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Britton. Dr. Young, next up is 0605 Department of Finance, request to award and execute a professional services agreement for property reassessment services. I'm guessing that would be Ms. Cobb?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. You go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm here to request an award and to execute a professional services agreement for reassessment services. So I put out a request for proposal to engage the services of a qualified firm to provide property reassessment services for the Commissioner of Revenue. As a result of the RFP, an evaluation committee was formed and was tasked with evaluating the proposals and subsequently interviewing the most responsive and responsible proposer. After careful review of the proposals submitted by Bright Minds and after interviewing the proposal, proposer, sorry, the evaluation committee recommended that a contract be awarded to Bright Minds as they will best serve the interests of the Commissioner of Revenue and King George County as a whole. They have the technical expertise, the staff's resources, management structure, and experience to serve the county. So today, I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to award and execute a professional services agreement with Bright Minds in the amount of $159,726.15 subject to approval by the county attorney. And then lastly, I also recommend that the board amend the fiscal year 1920 budget and appropriate the funds by transferring $159,727 from the general fund balance to the Commissioner of Revenue's reassessment line. And that is all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do.
Yeah, Mr. Stonehill, go right ahead.
Just one last thing before we go through with this. On page 51 of that packet, right there next to a seal, obviously, it's a typo, but they spelled the name of their own company wrong. Should be Bright Minds LLC, not Bright Tines LLC. So before we go on with that, they should probably get that corrected.
Thank you, sir, for pointing that out.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I did. I should just have a microphone on, so that's okay. We had a motion, property second, and I'll go for roll call. Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Stonehill?
Aye.
Mr. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Cupka?
Cupka, aye.
Okay, Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cobb and Dr. Young.
Thank you.
Next up, next up is discussion items, 06, 06, CDBG Telecommunication Planning Grant Award. Dr. Young?
Yes, Madam Chair. The Department of Housing and Community Development, or DACD, has awarded King George County a Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, in an amount of $31,550. This grant was awarded in support of the planning and design of the fiber infrastructure in the Northern Neck communities as detailed in the Dominion Power Broadband Initiative. If the board would allow, I'll quickly read through the letter. It states, Dear Chairman Bender, I review the county's request for the CDBG planning grant assistance for the proposed King George County Telecommunication Planning Effort. We're prepared to offer the planning grant funding in an amount of $31,550. In order to get under contract, the county is required to complete the following activities and submit the following documentation no later than May 29, 2020. Through the larger list of requirements that's listed in the letter, it specifically states that the county must provide a list of members that will serve on the county's broadband committee or local team. If we do not have a broadband wireless authority, which we have dissolved, we must establish a local broadband committee that will provide feedback or input throughout the regional planning process. This committee should be led by the county administrator or a designee and should include a representative from the Northern Neck Planning District Commission and a variety of stakeholders in the community. After having discussions with the county staff and having a discussion with the DACD, we would like to recommend to the board that board task the Economic Development Authority with assuming this responsibility for the local broadband committee. And with your permission, we'd write a letter to, while directing Economic Development Director, to engage the Economic Development Authority and they'll begin utilizing a portion of the EDA meeting to meet the requirements for the local broadband requirements of the DACD grant.
Mr. Granger, I saw you had your hand up. Did you have a question?
I did, but I think Dr. Young answered. I was just gonna ask if Nick Minor was gonna be involved as the EDD since it's the EDA, but it sounds like he will be providing guidance to them. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Nick Minor will serve as my designee with the local committee and I'll be serving on the regional authority, working with the other county administrators in the Northern Neck Planning District Commission to ensure that we have a solid plan moving forward since King George County is invested in this memorandum of understanding with our Northern Neck Communities, Northern Neck Electric Commission, Dominion Power and all points broadband.
Does anybody else have a question? Because I- Ms. Cupka, do you have a question?
Madam Chair, yes, I do. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
So I would only note, I like, I really like that we're using the Economic Development Authority and Economic Development Department staff for this because they certainly represent a cross-section from the local community, the business community. However, it does say and should include a representative from the local community college and universities. And I would note, so we have RCC or we have Germana Community College and I think if I remember correctly, we might even have one of those presidents that actually lives is a resident of King George County now, if I remember correctly, and a representative from the local school system. And I would note that the last time we did a broadband planning grant when I was on staff, we also did have Dan Hopper from King George County Schools on that committee. And I certainly don't speak for him or the schools. I don't know if he's available, but since it says should, I think perhaps we ought to at least entertain and consider doing what we can to make it happen. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka. My question, Dr. Young, too, is the other localities, do they have one board member on this commission also?
Two things. Number one, ma'am, no, they don't have the board members on the commission. It's really amongst the staff since the board is really going to be the policy decision makers, especially when it starts having discussions regarding if local contributions are gonna be made or if there's gonna be right away decisions that have to be made, policy decisions of that nature. But right now, it's my understanding that it's amongst the county staff, the service local commissions that bring that information back to the board and the general public. And then I understand Mrs. Cupka's concerns. And we did have that conversation with the DACD and explained to them that we do have an Economic Development Authority who has taken the lead on many of our, not only business initiatives, but attempts to resolve broadband issues in the community. And the reason that we had suggested that we move forward with the EDA was, number one, to empower that authority and afford them one more initiative that we know that they can see they take into and continue to be a strong partner with the Board of Supervisors. Number one, and number two, the committee is already established and they already have routine meetings, which is already advertised and published. And I just, we felt that with that stability and consistency, we've had that organization that we can depend on to ensure that we keep the ball moving on the initiative. In addition, we are fully aware that we would have some type, the board supervisors, since the EDA is you all's appointees, you have some exercise of authority and control over the EDA and can continue to keep the mission moving forward. Whereas if we depended on a third-party agency like the Community College or a medical organization, we're basically at the mercy of their schedules and can't guarantee consistency and predictability in meeting schedules. So it's just my recommendation, but we definitely would default to whatever direction that the board would like to take.
I'm gonna call it on the horn, too, because it, I seem like it would be important to have a member from some one of our schools representing on this committee because especially if in the fall, we have to go partially virtual, all virtual or a little virtual, it would be important to have somebody at the table. And what do you guys feel about that, Mr. Granger?
I agree with you, Ms. Bender. I think we should at least include the schools. I appreciate Dr. Young's concerns. And the schools are obviously part of our county. So I feel like we should probably be able to come to an agreement on meetings and be able to make this continue to happen. As far as outside agencies, we go back and forth. But this is definitely something we don't want to drop the ball on, so we want to push it forward. So maybe the less number of people, the better in that regards to make sure that it continues to go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill?
I think we should have somebody from school. I mean, their IT department as well, like you said. You know, if we're still doing this all virtually come fall, you know, they should definitely have some input, but I agree with Mr. Granger, you know, too many cooks in the kitchen and things, the work doesn't get done. So, yeah, the school would be good. The rest, I don't think are necessary.
Mr. Stonehill, I agree there. I was on a committee once, the, forgive me, forget the name of it at this point, but there was too many people on it and nothing got done. But having just one representative up to the schools like Mr. Hopper would be really good. Mr. Bush?
I'm gonna side with my colleagues on this one. I think what we've been going through for the last couple of months has exposed a lot of vulnerabilities. We have teleworkers, you know, the base population is heavily relying on that. Those that don't work on the base, that work outside of King George, that commute out to work and come back, their teleworking capabilities are a serious challenge. And then there's the schools. Not just current K through 12 in the county, but those that are continuing education. Those college students that have left campus and come home and are continuing their degree work from their parents' home. All that, all those things have, those vulnerabilities have been exposed. And I think maybe, I understand what they're talking about. We don't want too many, too many people on this committee, but maybe, maybe we need to look at, I mean, is there someone that has some experience with how the Fed teleworking, what those shortfalls are, that maybe they can contribute as long as a person from the schools. I'm not talking about bringing in a whole bunch of people, but maybe one or two. Someone from the schools community and maybe someone from like the federal community. Maybe that might, might help. But I'm just glad that we're able to keep this ball moving forward, you know. A lot of good discussion goes nowhere unless it's acted upon, so I'm looking forward to see how this progresses. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Granger, I see you're in thought and I want to ask you, because you are one of those federal workers that is teleworking. What do you think about a representative from the base's IT department?
We could reach out to them and ask them. I don't know how, I think Dr. Young's concerns would be seen in this regard. They have their own set of priorities and accommodating maybe our meetings might become a little more problematic. I can tell you, at least from my experience, it's just internet connectivity availability is is the biggest thing for those people who are off-base in order to continue to work from an at-home state. I don't, I don't know. I don't think it's probably the best way to move forward. I think we should avoid bringing that group into this discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Granger. Ms. Cupka?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, ma'am. I am good with my colleague's recommendation. Dr. Young, if you can just get us someone from King George County Schools on this committee, I am willing to move forward. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka. I agree, Dr. Young, so just add one member from the school system. Mr. Hopper would be a good recommendation. And thank you, Dr. Young, for bringing this to our attention and making it. Mr. Granger, do you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I know, I was getting to that. But, Richard, Mr. Granger, would you like to make the motion?
Should we make a motion now or do we want to wait until the next meeting, once staff identifies the school representative?
Yes, sure.
I just recommend a consensus, which I believe that we have. It's my understanding that the board, the board so desires to move forward with the EDA and an additional school representative to serve as a local committee. And if it is the board's desire and consensus, we'll move forward identifying that school board member and we'll bring it back to the board for a vote to appoint these members to the local broadband committee.
Okay.
All right. And that's all we need, Mr. Britton, correct? Just a consensus at this moment?
Yes, because you're not appointing the committee unless, as I understand it, you're not appointing the committee. So that is correct. I agree with Mr. Young.
All right. Thank you. You have your consensus, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next up is the discussion item I put on. All of us have received in the last week, week and a half, correspondence about the Harry Nice Bridge and the Doggeran Railroad Heritage Trail, asking us questions about its use of making pedestrian running trail or biking trail or fishing pier. Dr. Young, do you have anything to add? My supervisors have all read the letter. I can read the letter, but I was opening up for a discussion. Did we want to entertain? What do you want to talk about? Mr. Granger, I'll start off with you.
I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I believe that, I believe that there was two issues at hand, or at least one issue at hand that's ready for a public discussion and that was if the board wanted to entertain the Doggeran Railroad Heritage Trails request to write a letter to both Governor Northam and Governor Hogan requesting that a dedicated bicycle lane or pedestrian path be added to the Harry Nice Bridge. I think that that's the issue that we're trying to get, gotten from the board on. And if you so desire, I'm prepared to read the letter that, the letter detailing the Doggeran Railroad Heritage Trails request.
Go ahead, Dr. Young. Let you read along with this time.
Okay, dear King George County Supervisors, may I first thank you for your vision and partnership in supporting the Doggeran Railroad Heritage Trail. As you know, we had hoped that Maryland Governor Larry Hogan would have followed through on our original promise to ensure the Nice Milton Bridge connected King George County with Charles County, Maryland, would have included a separate bicycle pedestrian lane. Unfortunately, it has not happened and it is especially regretful as the new bridge is planned to last 100 years. The Maryland Transit Authority has offered $17 million to another Maryland entity such as Charles County to take over the current bridge rather than having it demolished. Charles County was not in a financial position to do so and no other Maryland jurisdiction stepped in. However, as you can see in the attached letters sent to Governor Hogan and Governor Northam, there could be another solution to have a major bicycle pedestrian facility connecting King George for generations to come. That would be a joint Virginia and Maryland partnership using the $17 million offered to maintain the existing Nice Milton Bridge for future generations. This would be a win-win for both states as well as preserving what would be the longest bicycle pedestrian bridge in the nation. Without the impact of trucks and heavy traffic, the lifecycle of the bridge and maintenance required would be substantially reduced. Those would be charged for bicycle and pedestrian use as the bridge is a major connector for Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail. It would also have a major tourism and economic development benefits to both states and in particular to King George and Charles County. As noted in my attached letter, although history makes this a Maryland bridge, one half of the users come from Virginia. Two states are partnering on the new American Legion Bridge in the Upper Potomac River. Our citizens deserve that same vision for the Potomac River's Nice Milton Bridge project. In the previous legislative setting, I had the privilege of sponsoring the Woodrow Wilson Bridge Compact for Virginia. That bridge is a model for meeting motorists and non-motorist traffic movement. Likewise, Virginia is in partnership with Kentucky jointly managing the Brakes Interstate Park. Maryland may have similar partnerships. The Nice Milton Compact could also include partnering with localities in both states. My request to you is to seek your support in writing to both Governor Northam and Governor Hogan and request that their administrations examine this potential solution. There is no cost to the county for asking and the result may be a tremendous benefit to the citizens of King George. A Maryland-Virginia-Nice Milton Bicycle Pedestrian Compact would be a model for our nation and would serve to provide the economic growth and tourism benefits for our citizens. The COVID-19 pandemic has shown the citizens overarching demand for outdoor experiences. Please let me know if I can provide any additional information to you. Sincerely, David G. Brickley, President, Doggeran Railroad Heritage Trail Association. So his request is not for the dedicated bike path, rather it's a request that we write a letter to Governor Hogan and Governor Northam requesting that we exercise that $17 million of funding to build a partnership between King George County, I'm sorry, between Virginia and the state of Maryland to maintain the old bridge as a dedicated pedestrian slash bicycle path. And the question is if the board would like, authorize that a letter be written to those two offices.
Thank you, Dr. Young, for reading that. I'll open this up for discussion. I'll have some questions at the end. Mr. Granger, do you have any questions or discussion?
I guess my biggest question would be about maintenance of that bridge, because it is old. And so if the desire is to keep it wholly intact, I assume that would be a significant effort. Obviously, you're not gonna have the same traffic going over it, but I have, I would like to better understand what kind of fiscal impact it would have before I'd ask those governors to support that, because it could be a very significant impact.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill?
I like the idea. I just don't know how feasible it is. If it's just, you know, if they're just looking for a letter saying, hey, guys, these two governors, you know, what if type thing, you know, I would be amenable to it. You know, like Mr. Granger said, it's, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff that goes in behind that and, you know, maintenance and who's in charge of it, all that kind of stuff. But, you know, if they're just looking for a letter to say, hey, you know, what if, I'd be amenable to it. I mean, I think it's a kind of a cool idea, but so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Mr. Bush?
Guess I'll be the bad guy. Couple realities.
Um, couple realities. Um, yes, it would attract some tourism, but not enough to cover this. Uh, the $17 million that Maryland will be putting up would be, it looks like a one-time payment and that wouldn't even come close to, to the maintenance that that bridge would require. And we cannot assess tolls on that bridge. So questions would be, who would fund the maintenance, which is only going to grow with time as deterioration becomes more prevalent with time? We simply can't afford it and the state of the Commonwealth of Virginia already has issues funding its currently existing transportation needs. So in theory, while this sounds like a good idea and nice, we simply can't afford it and it would be one more burden on our already heavily extended transportation issues. Um, from what I'm seeing, uh, that has been coming out of the General Assembly, um, for the last couple of years, um, it doesn't matter which party has control of the General Assembly, but transportation funding seems to be going towards Northern Virginia and to supplement those, uh, DC transportation needs. Um, I just don't see us getting affordability out of it, or wrong word. Um, I don't see us getting appropriate funding, um, to be able to support something like this. And like, like how happens oftentimes with the state. If the state simply can't pay for it, it's passed down to the locality. So I have serious concerns. I wouldn't even want to open this can up. So I am absolutely against writing any correspondence to either governor in support of this initiative. It's just, it's something that's going to become a liability that we simply cannot afford. So, um, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Kupka.
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, I can.
And, and I apologize. I've done this all evening, but I pretty much have to type in the code two times before you can hear me and acknowledge me. Um, so I, I do agree, I agree in part with Mr. Stonehill. I, I think it'd be a cool idea. It'd be something really beneficial that we could offer bikers and hikers, um, pedestrians. I just, I, I don't, show me the money. Um, so I gotta go with, Mr. Granger has maintenance concerns and Mr. Bush was pretty clear in his maintenance and funding concerns. And I'm going to put this right out there. I'm looking at so many other things in our county that are desperate for funding, things that have gone unfunded for years and years and years. Um, Ralph Bunch High School has been trying to remodel their school for 20-plus years and now we have put it in the hands of a private developer to, to try to accomplish something. So, so we have that out there. We have a new courthouse that we're going to put out a bond for. We have, uh, Caladon State Park is looking from, my understanding from the past board for, uh, an acquisition, a private acquisition of the Lake Caladon property. And, and I just, there are just so many things that we could do that I just don't see how we could do this and, and choose anything different. So I'm going to have to go with Mr. Bush on this and it's a no for me. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka. I, I do share all those concerns. It's a great idea. And I mean, I love to bike. It's, I love to run, I love to walk, but there's just a lot of monetary pitfalls I see in it. And especially is the $17 million still available? And we have a unique situation where that Maryland owns most of the river. So the bridge would be in Maryland, but we would have to pay for it. There, and then security concerns. I know the residents of Roseland Drive already have concerns about Wayside Park. And then you're going to have a bridge that has all that attraction to all the people coming from everywhere if it's going to be the, the longest in the country. And so that's, that's going to cause worry for them. We have two new properties we acquired that we want to develop and you need money for that. It's just, I think it's a great idea, but it's just no, no funding. So I would vote, uh, no also for sending that letter, uh, Dr. Young. So, um, do we need to, uh, craft a response? Do you want to email them back, Dr. Young?
Yes, Madam Chair. I could, um, um, write a letter, respond to them, uh, conveying the board's wishes.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Dr. Young, and I, uh, congratulate them for, uh, their efforts and I, I wish them good luck in their efforts. Uh, next up is our county administrators report. Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I was asked by the board to establish the logistics necessary to resume hosting public hearings. In response, I have coordinated with Dr. Benson to utilize the King George High School Auditorium. Beginning June 16th, 2020, both the King George County Service Authority and Board of Supervisors will publish the auditorium as location for their respective business meetings until we have exhausted our need for a large facility. The first public hearing to be considered by the board supervisors is the King George Villages or Hertenstein, Hertenstein Resoning. This public hearing will be hosted on June 16th, 2020 at 6:30 PM, the King George High School Auditorium. I would like to remind the board that this hearing will be open to the general public. I would also like to ask that the board provide their staff guidance or your intent to maintain or suspend the remote access policy for the June 16th meeting.
All right. I'll go, uh, with each member and please give your thoughts. Mr. Granger.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, I appreciate Dr. Young for pulling this plan together. I think it makes sense. I think we need to start moving forward with these, uh, public hearings. I know that, um, Mr. Hertenstein's been waiting for some time on the vote. Uh, I think we owe it, uh, to, to all these public hearings that I've been sending and, and to try to move forward with what we can. Uh, I appreciate you looking into finding a venue that would be able to support this. I think the schools make a lot of sense. It's a big auditorium. Hopefully it would be enough space. I know we had a big turnout last time. Uh, hopefully it'd be enough space to accommodate all who would like to come because I certainly want everyone to have the opportunity to come and speak. I know that, that that will probably be one of the more heavily attended ones. Uh, I, and as far as the remote attendance, I think we should start trying to move towards, uh, attending. And, and I think, uh, it would be nice if we, we anticipated, uh, the whole board to meet together at the high school, uh, continuing to follow the, the governor's requirements for social distancing and, um, actually hold a meeting in person.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill.
I think it's a good idea. I think we need to get moving on these, uh, upcoming, um, things that we need to look at. And there's a, a number of them. And, um, I think the school's a, a good spot for these big, uh, meetings. So we don't have the problems that we had in the past. And I'm looking forward to get back together again because I miss you guys, seeing you in person.
Mr. Bush.
Yes, ma'am. I, um, I, I first want to thank Dr. Young and his team for putting together this plan to hold meetings at the, uh, at the auditorium. And, and I believe it's time to suspend the policy for remote participation for that meeting. And it lines up perfectly because I believe our local, uh, declaration of emergency expires on the 15th, which would be the day prior to that meeting. Um, so I'm looking, uh, to get back to some sense of enormity. So, uh, with that, I, I believe we should all be physically participating in, in something of, of that magnitude. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Kupka.
Madam Chair, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Uh, I agree with my colleagues. I want to thank Dr. Young for bringing the plan forward. And I further agree that, uh, the remote attendance policy will expire, it looks like the day before. Uh, and if I were not out of town today, you know, I would be there in the room in person with you, Mr. Bush and Dr. Young. Uh, so yes, let's, let's move on. Let's roll.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka. I, I agree with you. I, I'm kind of done with the, uh, virtual meetings and I'd like to see people that I haven't seen in three months again. Um, it was kind of weird walking in the county building a week ago to sign some papers because it was like a, going to a whole new world. But, uh, I also feel it's very important as the Shiloh representative, since this is a major issue in the Shiloh District, that I'd be there so the public could speak to us in person during their proper physical distancing. And I'm sure, Dr. Young, there'll be somebody there checking temperatures and all the checks as, uh, needed. Correct, Dr. Young?
Roger, Madam Chair.
All right. So I guess you have a good census. Is that all you needed, Dr. Young, for that?
Roger, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Young. What else do you got?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to invite the Emergency Operations Center, provide the board an update on the COVID-19 pandemic and its current impact on our community. I'll turn it over to Chief Moody.
You're unmuted.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Young. Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. Uh, just, uh, real quick, briefly, we want to give you an update, uh, on where things stand pre- uh, currently. Uh, I have with me here, um, along with myself, uh, Italian chief Steve Lynn. Um, next slide, please. Uh, currently, uh, as you can see in the top right-hand corner, uh, we're at 70 cases. Uh, those are cumulative case counts, uh, since we have first started. Uh, uh, active today is 24 residents, uh, within our county, uh, that, that are, uh, positive with, uh, COVID-19. We've had a total of 14 hospitalizations of our citizens and, uh, we're still, uh, still standing at four, uh, deaths due to COVID-19. Um, the, uh, age distribution that it affects the most are, uh, people ages of 30 to 39. It, uh, right at, uh, 22%. Uh, Virginia is a little over 46,000 cases as of today. Uh, Maryland's over 54,000 cases as of today. Uh, Fredericksburg region's over, uh, is it 1637? Um, Charles County, uh, we're still, you know, tracking what's going on across the, uh, bridge. Uh, Charles County's over 1,100 cases. Uh, St. Mary's over 500, uh, 518 cases and PG's over, uh, 15,500 cases. Um, next slide, please. Uh, as you can see, our, uh, we're still updating, uh, daily the emergency, uh, the COVID-19 emergency dashboard. Uh, our emergency management division, uh, is working hard daily to, uh, make sure this is updated and also sent out to, uh, to all, all the staff members. And, um, with that said, uh, we're, I'm going to go ahead and pass the rest, uh, of with what's going on with trending and stuff to, uh, to Chief Lynn.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Next slide, please. Uh, this is our dashboard. This is GIS product that's available on the county's website for citizens to, uh, to look at. Next slide, please. This is some data that we pulled off of the Health Department's website. Uh, just to kind of show you where we are at, right here, this is the total cases reported by date, uh, to the Health District. And, uh, the, the key is, is the golden line. That's a seven-day average, moving average. And we're right below, uh, we're around 840 cases, uh, today reported, uh, to the Health, uh, to the state. So you can see there's a little bit of a, a good downward trend there. Next slide, please. Yeah, this graphic is showing, uh, two, uh, data points about hospitals. You know, the one on your, uh, left is, uh, the no, number of patients hospitalized with a positive test. And you can see with the golden line, it's, it's holding pretty steady, uh, right around, uh, between 1,300 and 1,500 patients. The next slot, the next graphic to the right is showing the hospital bed, uh, capacity and what is occupied. So that's one of the big keys that the state worked on is to build their, uh, capacity in hospitals. Uh, so that, uh, the surge of patients need to be hospitalized. They have the, the capacity there and it's holding, you know, pretty low. And there's a lot of, uh, open beds or capacity at these ho- at hospitals in case of a surge. So those are, uh, good, uh, trends to see the ability for the hospitals to, to have the surge capability. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide i- is showing, uh, the number of tests, uh, run daily, uh, in, in the Commonwealth. And you can see that, uh, it's getting up towards its goal of 10,000 per day. And then the positivity rate, uh, the number of tests that's coming back is, uh, hidden downward towards the 10% mark. It's right now about 11%. And, uh, that is a good number to get to is, is a 10% as Commonwealth moves forward into Phase Two. And next slide, please. This is data, uh, for the Apatic Health District. And the, the graphic on the, on the left is showing the number of positive test results per day. And you can see the blue line, uh, it has a trend upwards. Uh, right now, we're ru- averaging roughly, uh, approximately about 50 cases or so per day with some peaks and valleys. But then the next slide is showing the, uh, hospital missions here in the Health District. And it's showing that, uh, it, there was a slight decrease and it's holding steady right now. So again, those are good, good data points that, uh, the hospitalization rate is, uh, is holding steady and, and not, uh, the worst-case scenario. Next slide, please. This is data, uh, for King George County. This is showing the cumulative number of cases as reported to the Health District in, in King George County. Our first case was on March 27th. And now as, uh, Chief Moody mentioned, that, uh, we have 70, uh, cumulative, uh, reported cases here in King George County. The next graphic showing the, it breaks it down for number of confirmed cases, uh, reported per day. And, uh, for the most part, uh, we've been, you know, one or two, our, our spike was, uh, four cases on May 26th. So, and there was many days, as you can see there, where we had no, uh, reported cases for citizens in King George County. Next slide, please. Uh, an update on some of the actions the EOC has taken since we last reported, uh, to the board. Uh, the big thing was the, uh, county reopening plan, uh, that we participated in. And then on, uh, Wednesday, May 27th, we conducted a, uh, safety down, a stand-down briefing for all the county employees. Uh, Chief Simmons in here, who's our infection patrol officer, and she provided a, a really, uh, detailed explanation or briefing on, uh, COVID-19, signs, symptoms to look for and how to, uh, good, uh, health practices, how to protect yourself. And, uh, also our PPE supply. We're maintaining a, a constant, uh, steady state of, uh, PPE here in, in our department. And we're able to help some of the other county departments in needed gloves or, um, other, um, hand sanitizer, those kinds of things for their offices. Next slide, please. Just real briefly, the way that, uh, citizens can get information, our KG Alert, the county website page, and also our Facebook page. Next slide, please. Some, uh, actions that citizens can take. Uh, be alert for online, uh, COVID scams. There are so many things that are popping up now online for, uh, citizens, uh, to purchase. Uh, and some of those are scams. Uh, face masks, I've seen, uh, home, uh, COVID-19 test kits, uh, certain, you know, cleaning products and stuff. So just when citizens go to buy stuff online, just make sure they get it from a rightful dealer. Obviously, social distancing, washing hands, covering coughs. And, uh, always look for, uh, follow official information from, uh, local and state, uh, resources. Next slide, please. At this time, we're open up to any questions, myself or Chief Moody.
Thank you. Do any of my board members have any questions, uh, for the EOC? I guess not. Thank you so much for your report and all the hard work you, you do over there, uh, in the, uh, EOC.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Young.
Yes, Madam Chair. I just have one more, uh, item for my county administrators' report. Um, we are rich, as the board is aware, the Wettlers Board has two vacancies, uh, of a five-man board. So, um, they just have just enough members to establish a quorum. Um, we have been searching for, uh, more individuals that we could recommend to the board to be appointed to the Wettlers Board. Um, and we have made contact with Howard Nelson. He had originally, uh, expressed an interest, uh, in serving on the Wettlers Board for the Doggeran District. Um, and then, um, he had, um, contacted the Community Development Department and said that he wasn't interested in, um, serving. However, um, as recent as of two or three days ago, which Nelson reached out to the Community Development, Development Department again and has requested that he be appointed to the Wettlers Board to serve in the Doggeran District. So, um, with the understanding and the need for additional appointees to the Wettlers Board, I'd recommend that the board appoint Howard Nelson for the Doggeran District, King George County Wettlers Board, with a term expiring on September 30th, 2023.
Do you have the motion?
I'm amenable to it, but I, it's, it's a Doggeran district, so I prefer, um, I'm amenable to it, but it's the Doggeran District, so I prefer if Mr. Stonehill had the opportunity to weigh in and make the motion.
I emailed Mr. Nelson. Actually, recommended him or nominated him for, I think, our very first meeting or something, and then the flu bug episodes came in, and I think he kind of got lost in the cracks. But I did email him back, and we spoke about, I guess he had a neighbor who was interested in it, as well as for his information, but I did not get it, but I kind of left it up to him if he wanted to do so. But if he's interested, yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Nelson to serve on the Wetlands Board for the Doggeran District.
Second.
Any discussion? I will now call for the vote. Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Stonehill?
Aye.
Mr. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Kupka? Thank you. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Young, for bringing that to our attention. Dr. Young?
Yes, Madam Chair, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Young, to you and your staff. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn until Tuesday, June 16, at 6:30 at the King George High School.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll go for the vote. Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Stonehill?
Aye.
Mr. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Kupka? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting on June 16, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. at King George High School's auditorium. That meeting may be held by electronic means or remote participation only, and may be closed to the public being physically present. All citizens are encouraged to participate in advance or during the meeting by electronic means as provided by the county.